Okay, Dr. Corman, we are now live on YouTube.
Okay.
And whenever you are ready, I will bring up the.
Corman, we are.
Let me exit out of that.
Technology.
Yes. Okay, let me share my screen.
There we go.
All right.
So I learned this trick from you, Jeff, that I want to shrink your screen so that I can actually have gallery view of everybody on. Yeah, I can see where everybody's going. So I'd like to bring to order the Granville Exempted Village School District Board of Education meeting on February 22nd. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the republic.
One nation under God. Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Okay. So, good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the Board of Education meeting tonight. Before we get started, I would like to make a land acknowledgement. As many of you know, we have established a diversity, equity, and inclusion superintendent committee that has been meeting for about the last six months. Among the initiatives begun by the committee, it was recommended that we begin our meeting with a land acknowledgement, which is a public statement of the name of the traditional native inhabitants of a place that honors their historic relationship with the land. Sorry. So I would like to take a moment to honor and recognize the many indigenous peoples who have lived in this part of the Ohio River Valley and from where some of these people were removed. Granville schools are located on the ancestral homelands of the nations of the Shawnee, Miami, Wyandotte, Delaware, and the people of the Fort Ancient Hopewell and Adena cultures known for building the earthworks and Alligator Mountain. I make this land acknowledgement because as an educational institution, I think it is important that we reflect on and engage with the historical context within which our schools exist. And to recognize and appreciate that there were many indigenous people living here before we were here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brittany, will you take the role, please?
Dr. Corman.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Ms. Deeds.
Here.
Mr. Wolf.
Here.
Ms. Shaw.
Here.
Thank you. Motion to approve the agenda.
And just one caveat, there is an addendum to the agenda, so I just wanted to call your reference or bring it to your attention that 9.04 approval of an agreement with the Field and Tech Services with Licking Area Computer Association has been added to the agenda.
So moved as amended?
Thank you. Thank you.
Second.
Thanks, Fred. I'm sorry, Brittany, take the role, please.
Mr. Miller.
Hi.
Mr. Wolf.
Hi.
Ms. Deeds.
Hi.
Ms. Shaw.
Hi.
Dr. Corman.
Here.
Hi.
Sorry.
Okay, Brittany, I have stopped the screen share, so when you're ready for the monthly financial report, you can.
All right.
Share your screen.
Okay, we have the January 2021 monthly financial report. The first slide here shows a cash balance comparison of the current year represented by the blue bars compared to last year represented by the gray bars. And for the month of January, we have about $1.5 million more in ending cash compared to last year at this time. And that's primarily due to the phase in of the income tax. So that's consistent with what we would expect for this time of year. Looking at January revenue collections compared to prior year, local tax revenue again is up 400,000 just for the month of January. And that's the difference between last January being a partial, partially phased in payment versus this year and receiving a fully phased in payment for January. State revenue is down slightly compared to last year. And that's a timing difference of when the state made cuts to our funding in this year versus last year. I'll also note, it's not reflected in the financial report yet, but the state did restore some of the funding that was cut for this year. And so we will actually begin receiving that. It'll show up next month in the February financial report. But I did want to note that part of that cut is being restored. So that is a positive that we will see next month. Looking at year-to-date revenue collections, so July through January, again, local tax revenue is up, and that's the phase in of the income tax. State revenue is a timing variance through January of the previously mentioned cuts. However, that will start to reverse itself in February when some of that is restored. Because actually what they're going to do is make us whole all in one lump sum and then spread out the remainder of those payments through the rest of the year. So February will be a bit of an outlier there. And then all other revenue, very consistent with where we were last year at this time. Then looking at January expenditures compared to prior year, salary and benefits. Just want to highlight really quick there, just down slightly, and that is due to changes with open enrollment on the benefit side. As well as we implemented some plan design changes for our medical insurance plan. So those two factors combined are impacting the benefits line item. In total expenditures, very consistent with last January. Then year-to-date expenditures, salary and benefits. As we've talked about every month, we have the double up of the insurance payments in July due to our software conversion and getting on the appropriate cycle with those payments. So we'll continue to see a significant increase in that line item all year due to those 13 payments compared to prior year where we would have had 12. Purchase service is really just timing, and that will likely catch up by the end of the year. And then all other expenditures down over prior year because last year that line item included the transfer for the athletic complex. So since we have two pretty significant variances here, I actually, in the side notes over here, have a comment that after we adjust for the double insurance payment and the athletic complex transfer, expenditures are actually up 86,000. So that's more of an apples-to-apples comparison for year-over-year rather than the 683 that you see in the graphic. So very consistent with prior year.
That's great to have that. There's always going to be these little changes and things like that that make it look funny. So in those adjustments, although they're not officially in the books, they really help us understand where we are. So thank you.
Yep. And then I'm going to jump to COVID-19 related expenses. We don't have an update on the athletic complex. This month, we are expecting the final retainage payment to be made next month. So hopefully we can have that project all wrapped up, but no changes there from last month. So for COVID-19, the first graph here shows all of the various funding sources that we have to utilize for COVID expenses. And one item that changed from last month is the S R two allocation. So in January, we received notification of a second round of federal funding specifically for K-12 schools. And most districts saw almost a four times increase from their original S R one allocation. So we're receiving just over $350,000 in those funds. Again, they are just like the last round restricted in use. So there are only specific purposes that you can use those funds for. Cleaning supplies, PPE, staffing to maintain our existing services or to provide additional support due to the online versus in-person needs and addressing those from a staffing perspective. So all of those are allowable uses of those funds. And I'll show you on the next slide here. What we're actually able to do with those funds is we can go back all the way to March of last year. And any qualifying expenses can be reallocated to this grant. So what we're trying to do is minimize the impact to the general fund. So we're trying to identify and make sure that all of the general fund expenses that we have listed here that we can just kind of move those under the S R two allocation to utilize all of those federal funds first. So the application for those funds just became available last week. So next month, you will see that those changes reflected here, and hopefully we won't have hardly any expenses left for the general fund to absorb. So that's another positive change from last month. And then we just have the cash reconciliation for audit purposes in the financial report. Any other questions or comments on the January financials?
I have a quick question. Can you repeat? Do we have to use the S R two funds by a certain time, or does it not matter anyway? Because we will use them.
We will definitely use them, but we have until September of 2022 to use those funds.
23.
20.
Yeah, I think, yeah, they go beyond 22. The S R two funds do.
Okay.
I believe, but no matter.
Plan, Cecile, is to use them all in the next fiscal year anyway. But I think there may be, we may be able to carry them over. But we likely won't end up doing that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and they'll have to be for COVID-related expenses and things like that, so forth, which we hope we're done with by 2023.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, the longer this goes on, hopefully the less expenses we would have anyway. So, yeah. All right, I will stop my sharing and turn it back over to you, Jeff.
All right, great. Thanks, Brittany. And I'm gonna do a speaker view. So I wanted to give the board an update, kind of a COVID update. I've kind of been giving a report every single month, just kind of updating you on things that are happening related to COVID and how we're actually conducting school. So the first thing that I'd like to report is some just statistics. We actually only have one active case in Granville schools right now. It is a remote learner who's not in the in-person setting. So obviously, we don't have to contact trace in those situations. But that includes staff and students. So that is a really good indication that things are trending in the right direction. However, that doesn't mean that we are, you know, easing off of any layers of protection. We're going to continue to do what we've been doing in order to keep kids safe, staff safe. So that is good news from a numerical standpoint. I would also say that that trend is also mirroring what's happening in Licking County. We were at a high of 1,000 cases down to now 400 at the last count of active cases in Licking County. So that's, that's a really good sign. On February 12th, 260-ish employees were given the Pfizer vaccine at a clinic hosted by the Licking County Health Department at the Rees Center at OSU Newark. I have to say that Chad Brown and his entire team deserve a huge pat on the back and a kudos for the efficiency and the ease in which they were able to vaccinate the 11 county schools and then all of the private schools and independent schools in the area. So in three days, he was able to vaccinate all of the people that wanted to be vaccinated in that school employee category. And that is a huge feat. And so Chad and his team deserve a huge pat on the back. We appreciate their their willingness to work with us and schedule us independently from the other clinics so that we have, we were able to streamline that for staff. The second shot is going to be a little bit more of an interesting conversation because second shot availability is becoming a little less clear even from Chad's perspective. So we are going to, we have 21 days till we are supposed to get the second shot from a Granville schools perspective. There are some days on the calendar that we've identified that would be advantageous. That Friday, March 5th would be great, leaning into a weekend that would be exactly 21 days for Granville schools. But again, everything is subject to availability. And so I have a feeling that we can plan for March 5th, but if, you know, we don't have the vaccine and Chad says March 9th in the evening is your time, we're going to have to do that. So why is that important? We are, along with everyone else, reading the research and seeing what happens when people get their second dose. Typically, people are down for about 24 to 48 hours. So what that would mean for our students and our parents is the day after we get that vaccine clinic or the two days after that vaccine clinic, we will be in remote. And we will tell parent or teachers to prepare for those two days and we'll go remote for those two days and then come back in the in-person setting. And that is really because we will not have staff available to us. And I've heard stories from doctors who said, oh, I think I can, you know, muscle my way through it after their second shot, and they were down for 24 to 48 hours. And so it's not a matter of being tough enough to weather through it. It just makes you feel crummy. So we're going to do that. So I'm just trying to make sure people are aware that that eventuality could happen and that we've talked about it at least publicly, that it's a real possibility based on availability.
Quick question?
Yes.
Do you mean, when you say remote, do you mean like a snow day remote or is like?
It's a snow day remote. Yes, good clarification. So it will be asynchronous learning so that our staff can recuperate. Thank you, Jen. So that's kind of the update on the vaccine conversation. Next, I want to talk a little bit about spring break. Many have been asking if we will have a similar remote week after spring break like we did after the winter break. And the answer is no. We are not going to need a remote week after spring break for two reasons. One, our numbers that I just reported are low. And, and they are low across the county. So from a data perspective, we're in a much different place than we were going into the winter holiday season between Thanksgiving and winter break. The second reason is you don't have as many opportunities for high-spread events like holiday gatherings. So yes, you may travel, but you're typically traveling with your home tribe. So you're not reaching out and creating large networks that are coming together to celebrate a specific holiday. So for those reasons, we are going to stay in person after spring break. And I want to make sure that that's communicated and communicated widely. I've, I put that out in Blue Ace News. I wanted to say it publicly here. They're just two very different breaks. And I wanted to communicate the rationale for that. Recently, any questions about that piece? Okay. Recently, you've heard the governor talking about his push to get schools back in session. And, you know, the statistics are, I believe, 70% of schools are in some type of hybrid five-day in-person, and then the rest are in remote. And his push has been, if you get the vaccine, we want you to get your kids back in school. In conjunction, so we don't have that issue. All right, that we're not kind of in that group that he's talking to. In that same conversation, he is also talking about kind of what is your plan to recoup learning? And I don't believe that that same conversation is relevant to us as well because we've been in person, we've been in remote, learning all year. So we do every single year, pre-COVID and post-COVID, we do offer summer intervention for students that are struggling. That's usually a teacher and a parent conversation about where a child is at. We also do things at the 712 level that are designed for credit recovery and other things that students can do in the summer to catch up if necessary. We are going to still do that and maybe do a little bit more this year because of some of the the issues around just learning in a virtual environment. So and honestly, some of the remote days that we've had because of snow days. So we will offer, you know, a more robust summer intervention program, K-12, so that people are feeling like their children are making progress. From a data standpoint, we are doing very well. If you look at our data this year compared to data in the past years, we are hitting very similar benchmarks for progress on some of our progress monitoring tools like maps. So we look at reading and math across maps, and we are doing very well at hitting our progress monitoring and our goals for student projections and growth. So I feel like our data specifically is driving us into the conversation about, okay, who isn't necessarily thriving in their current environment and how can we support them through summer intervention? So that's going to be our approach. But when you, when you hear more of the plan for how are you going to get back into school and how are you going to extend the school year or start early or any of those types of things? He's not really talking to us. He's talking to more of the schools that have been fully remote for the entire year or in a hybrid situation where students are getting potentially 50% of the content or curriculum versus the entire course guide. So that I think hopefully should help clarify, you know, what he's talking about as far as a learning plan. Any questions related to that?
Maps is K6.
We actually do K8.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the last thing that I would, I would say is obviously, there are a lot of end-of-the-year activities that are coming up, such as things like graduation and prom and all those kinds of things. We continue to ask for guidance of what we can and cannot do. Matt has been working with several contingency plans at the high school to think about the end-of-the-year activities. And we'll obviously be communicating as soon as we have information that we can operationalize and put into plan. We, you know, we now have the benefit of an outdoor facility in the outdoor athletic complex that could be advantageous to us if, for our graduation ceremony. We also had a great experience doing a drive-in ceremony last year. So I think we have the ability to execute on these types of activities that we want to hold and do it safely for the rest of the community. As far as, I'm starting to get questions about, okay, so what about 21, 22? And I appreciate everyone's desire to want to know what's going to happen next year. I share your desire. But at this point, I believe it's too early to tell as far as what type of guidance we will be dealing with and addressing. So a perfect example is the CDC just released guidance again. And obviously, the Licking County Health Department has looked at the CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and several other sources in order to craft the Licking County guidance document. We're going to continue to prioritize that document in creating the layers of protections for our students because they've been proven effective. So we're going to continue to operate that way. We don't necessarily know what's going to happen from now until the beginning of school in August. Obviously, our desire is to operate as normal as possible because we believe that that's in the best interest of all students. So exercise patience and hopefully, you know, as we start to get into springtime, we will have a better understanding of what's going to be happening. The other question that I'm getting quite a bit about is what about state testing? Is there going to be a waiver related to state testing? There is a House bill that has been dropped, House Bill 67, that is looking at state testing, but that would require a waiver from the federal government. And the Secretary of Education at the federal level has not been confirmed yet. So I don't believe that they will be offering any waivers in advance of his being confirmed. So all that's still up in the air. We have plans to assess our students as we have traditionally pre-COVID done. And, and we'll, you know, do whatever we can to get those assessments completed to understand where students are at in their academics. Even though we have a lot of internal metrics to tell us that, too. Sometimes those state assessments are just interesting validation of what we already know about our learners. So I've talked a lot about COVID. So any questions about that before I pivot to our next report on diversity, equity, and inclusion?
Thomas, did you do something?
I'd like to echo your comments. And thanks to Chad Brown and the Licking County Health Department through this whole process since it very began. You know, they've really helped us kind of consolidate the science, right, understand best practices and things like that. And when you look at where we are in Granville and Licking County compared to places across the state and around the country, we are just head and shoulders above in terms of the ability to continue to educate our kids. And that makes a huge difference. You know, I really feel for those communities that have not been able to do that. And even now, those communities that don't have a good synchronization between their health providers and their health department and the school districts, and they're trying to figure out how to get vaccinated still around the country. You know, we've really got things under control. So a big thanks to them for, you know, just the logistics, but also helping us stay focused on the science and understand best practices because that's been a lot of what's allowed us to get back in action. And I certainly support, you know, whatever we need going forward relative to the next series of vaccinations and a remote day, if that's what it takes for a staff to be in person or to be, to be able to provide service. As well as, you know, looking at this summer, you know, if there's remedial things that can be done because some kids have thrived in this environment, some kids have struggled, you know, whether you're in school or out, you know, it's education is an individual case-by-case basis. So if there's students and families that that can serve, you know, it's nice that some of the funds that are being provided probably can be directed toward that, you know, some of the S R funds. You know, some of the SRF funds and things like that can be used. So I think that's. Important to keep that on the radar screen as we kind of wrap up the school year and look at the summer. So again, thanks to Chad and all of you for that.
Thank you, Thomas.
Thanks, Thomas. Yeah, no, just I agree 100%. And also, you know, thanks to our staff, as always, every, every, every month, we have to say thanks to our staff. And our administrators, who you guys have been working like crazy. And you know, I feel so fortunate to be, you know, the head of a school board of a district where we've been able to accomplish all that we've been able to accomplish. So. Thank you to all of our staff and administrators as well. And then one quick question. That you, in a conversation that we had about assessments and graduation requirements. Will, even if there was to be a waiver, would we still offer testing for that purpose?
So, so yeah, it, that's a great question. So. Remember, a lot of the end of course exams are requirements to get certain level of points in order to obtain a grad- graduation eligibility. There are some non-traditional pathways. Such as technology seals or other things like that. But the majority of our students. Get their eligibility pathway for graduation through state assessments. So it really is a two-pronged question. The first question is, do we offer the assessments? The second question is, if we don't, is there still? A pathway for a child to graduate? And those are two critical conversations. And so even if there was a waiver, but they were offering the ability for us to offer the assessments. We would probably offer the assessments so that. We can ensure that all of our students can obtain the necessary amount of points in order to maintain their graduation pathway. So either way, we, we believe that we would move in that direction. Unless something, you know, extraordinary happens and we, we need to change that because obviously no, all of our plans are written in pencil. So, but right now we would still offer that.
And just as like, you know, historical perspective. So like, you know, when my son who graduated two years ago started high school. Like graduation requirement, core requirements changed like three or four times while he was in high school. Have we been like? With the same requirements now for two years, one year, two years, two years? Okay, right. Thanks.
And.
That's good.
And I, even as I say that, Ryan's probably a better person to tell us the specifics. But I, there actually may have been a change in last year to this year related to seals. But in general, the concept's the same.
Okay.
Yeah. Good questions.
Real quick, just a suggestion. There's a great on the website, there's a great school restart plan or like COVID-19 updates. If and when the, the, the staff have the vaccine or getting the vaccine. And then the potential of those remote days, if that could be right there under that COVID-19 update, that would be really helpful.
On the website?
Yeah, right on the website.
Absolutely. We could do that. Just jotting down and out. Okay. All right. Next, I'd like to give the board a little update on the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee work. That Dr. Corman referenced at the beginning of this meeting. And referenced the land acknowledgement as, as a topic that was discussed in that committee. So in January, we formally created the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Superintendent Committee. That, that is a committee that's now fully operational. It's meeting once a month. To kind of talk through issues and topics related to diversity, equity and inclusion. And so. If there are community members that are interested in joining those types of committees. There are five super, now six superintendent committees that relate to whole child, world-class education, resources and operations, fiscal. Community relations, and then now diversity, equity and inclusion. If you're interested in any of those committees, if you contact Janelle King in my office. She can point you to the, to the correct contact person that facilitates those meetings. But in general, a superintendent's committee works on topics that. That help us gain a better appreciation of what the community's perspective is. But also helps us bounce and get feedback on a more regular basis around some initiatives that we're going to try and implement. So having it as a superintendent committee really does solidify some of the work that we're going to be doing moving forward. The land acknowledgement was just one of a variety of different things that we've. Talked about in that committee. I wanted to provide a few other specifics and then have, answer any questions related to our work. Another byproduct of the committee was we offered a professional development opportunity. By invitation to all of our staff to engage in a book study. That set is, so you want to talk about race? And so we have 52 staff members participating in about seven cohorts. That are, you know, combined in a book talk format. That are going through this book, chapter by chapter, and discussing the topics. And, and how it relates to Granville Schools, education in general. Better understanding the issues around race and in the context of diversity, equity and inclusion. Very pleased that we had, you know, 52 staff members who voluntarily are spending time out of, outside of the school day to, to do this work. So great conversations, the administrative team and a couple of board members have been participating as well in this conversation. And, and I think the one thing that has really been a central theme throughout those conversations. Is awareness, awareness, awareness. Awareness is, is very important through this process. And, and building better understanding of those, those topics help everyone. Gain a better appreciation and awareness of those issues. Another area that we thought would be important is to get kind of our end users' experience. And, and document that formula formally. So a lot of the conversations that stimulated the, the formation of this committee. Were, were from alumni who, diverse alumni who had shared their experiences. Being in a traditionally 98% white community. And so we, we are, have reached out with a third party who's interviewing those students. To gain a little bit more of an understanding of their experience in Granville Schools. The positives, maybe some things that we could improve in order to kind of. Lay out a glide path for what it is we want to achieve within this committee. And, and to also bring awareness to some of the, the topics that they, they feel were, were either helpful or not so helpful. In their, in their college or high school experience. So those interviews are currently being conducted by that third-party interviewer. Right now, we have departments in discussions and our librarians also looking at their collections. And kind of doing an assess, doing an assessment of literature. Related to diversity, equity, inclusion. How often are those topics referenced in, in not only English language arts, social studies, but also in our, our book collections? And do we have a diversity of authors, illustrators and, and. Characters represented in, in tech, or books that students are reading? So those, that work is happening at the department level. We also just in our last meeting, looked at a, an HR statement that could be included in our employee handbook. It's a diversity, equity and inclusion, like staff statement. And, and that will be, once it's tweaked, we will bring that to the board. Through the regular process of adopting our employee handbook. We'll just reference that as a change from last year to this year, and we'll look at it through that process. But again, it's about illuminating the issues and the expectations for staff related to. Creating a respectful learning environment. For not only them, but for the students. And. Obviously, there's going to be more things that evolve from the conversations that we're having. And so we thought it would be appropriate as we deliver the land acknowledgement. To talk a little bit more about some of the other work that's happening. That's critical work as we better understand all of the people that live within our community. Even if they are a small percentage of our community, they are still. All of us are Granville, Granvillians. So we want to better appreciate each other's. Issues and, and. Positives and challenges. Remember diversity, ass, uh. Equity and inclusion is really about asset recognition. Because everybody brings assets to the community. So. Any questions about diversity, equity and inclusion? And the committee work? Jen, Cecile, if you, if I missed anything, please feel free to add.
Yeah, no, I think that was a, that's a good summary of, of what we've been doing. And it's, it's a lot since we've only been, we were, you know, it was a task force first. And then raised to the superintendent committee level in January. And so just, but in six months, I think we've, you know, we've, we've begun to tackle a lot of, a lot of things. So. Yeah, it was a good summary. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to public comment. Would you like me to move forward with that, Jen? Dr. Corman?
Yeah, please do.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have one public comment. I am actually going to share my screen. So that you can see. The document that I will actually read aloud. So hopefully you see that letter currently on the screen. Can you give me a thumbs up? Okay, great. So this is from Sarah Lodge. Sarah Lodge is in the class of 2021, so she is a senior. She writes in her public comment, Dear Granville Exempted Village School Board of Education Members. I am reaching out to you to discuss a topic that was, that has not only affected my time in Granville Schools, but has impacted other female athletes as well. This issue is the use of the lady, lady in quotes, moniker that appears both. Lady aces and lady blue aces when describing female sports teams. I would like to officially remove the lady moniker from describing all female athletic teams and the athletes individually. In this letter, I will present my reasoning behind why I am pursuing this change and a small anecdote to help paint a picture. I hope that you sincerely consider officially removing the lady moniker from describing all female athletics in Granville Exempted Village Schools. In the fall of my junior year, my sister came rushing into my room to show me her field hockey jersey. She was excited to tell me that she had received my favorite number. But when she pulled it out, her demeanor changed. This was on account of the words lady aces written across the jersey. Instead of being proud of wearing my number and representing Granville, she was disheartened by a single word. There is no need to add the moniker when there is no male equivalent for the sport. Examples include field hockey, softball and volleyball. Additionally, no male sport is given the gender title such as gentleman blue aces. Current offenses of lady blue aces include, but are not limited to. The Varsity Softball Field scoreboard currently is adorned with lady blue aces. A recent post was made on the hire of a new boys soccer coach where it had already addressed. That it was discussing the girl soccer team and then continued on to address the team as lady blue aces. And the use of lady blue aces to describe the girls basketball team on Twitter. Universities have made the switch and no longer reference or refer to female teams as ladies, but rather as the school's main mascot. For example, the University of Tennessee, Middle Tennessee, Baylor and Penn State. The Granville Recreation District has made the decision to officially eliminate the use of lady. Describing female athletes with the lady moniker segregates us from our peers. Referring to all student athletes as blue aces unites us as a school district and unifies all student athletes under one name. If you have any comments or questions or concerns, please do not hesitate to reach out to me through my email, which can be found below. I am happy to provide more information on this topic. And would be willing, more than willing to discuss this issue further. Thank you for your time and consideration. Together, we can change the game by changing the name. Go Blue Aces. That's Sarah Lodge, again, a senior at Granville High School.
Thank, yeah. Thank you, Sarah, for, for writing into us. We appreciate hearing from you. I feel like this is an excellent topic to discuss among, at the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. To assess the situation and figure out how best to move forward. So I would encourage you to. Refer this to that committee.
Okay, so typically during public comment, the board refers that to me. And I then refer it to the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee. So that's what I'll do. Most likely that committee will request Sarah's participation in their next meeting. So that she can articulate her perspective. And a lot of times we, we. Collect data and try and look at how, you know, how this impacts, you know, the entire student body. So that's something that I could see envisioning happening, you know, throughout this, this year. So again, thank you, Sarah, for your public comment, and I will take it to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there any other public comment at this time?
I have not had any, and I will. Check with people monitoring. No comments.
No comments.
So we're good.
We'll move on in the agenda then, if you wouldn't mind putting that back on the screen when you have a chance.
The next thing that we will be doing is board discussion topics related to staff reports. And I believe that Mr. Wolf had, will start with kind of an update on the Granville Education Foundation.
Oh, great.
Thanks. Yeah, as an ex-official member representing the school board, I attended the last. Granville Education Foundation and they announced their winter 2021 grant cycle review summary. They recommended their committee, and I, I'd like to acknowledge all of them. The grant committee was. Amy Sanders, Renee Mortimer, Alex Lamson, Debbie Thomas, Casey Curtis. And they worked with Ryan Bernath and a community reviewer, Lindsay Shaw. They recommended. In total, for this cycle, $14,937.38 in grants. And that was fully funding. Five different grants, three through to the Granville Intermediate School. Two to the elementary school. And then they're recommended a partial funding at the intermediate school. For a bicycle scooter pedestrian safety program. The other five that were recommended. Was for. Funding for something called Tread Lightly, which is folding treadmills with a desk. Then the walking classroom, purchase 30 walking classroom portable devices. Then the microscopes for the land lab at GIS. Coding with B-bots, and these are robots supporting alphabet and word maps. And then finally, coding computers, marbles and more. Which are kits to learn to call, to code and solve logic puzzles. So thank you to the, to GEF for their continued and ongoing support. We really appreciate it.
That's great, Fred. And thanks to all those educators that came up with those ideas. You know, there's some really interesting ones in there and we couldn't do without the GEF. It's especially cool to see, you know, intermediate school teachers picking up things in the land lab as well. Which is really spearheaded by our high school environmental science group, but it's kind of cool seeing that come throughout the, the grades and so forth. So. We couldn't do it without the support of folks like the GEF. That's really cool. Great list. Thanks.
And I think GEF's doing a really good job of communicating. Through, throughout the school system to the teachers about these opportunities. So they're doing a really good job to let them know that they're there to support their ideas.
Any other topics for board discussion based on the? Staff reports?
Just a quick comment that, you know, how you talked about with the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. That a lot, you know, what we've been able to do so far is raising awareness. Which is so appropriate for a school district because awareness is knowledge. And as educators, this is what we, you know, we impart knowledge on, on our, on our students. And, and I think so. on our, on our students and, and I think so as a, as a beginning of the committee, I think it's a great, a great place to start.
Thank you.
I also appreciate in that committee and also on this board, but the diversity of opinions and perspectives. And I think that, thank you for setting up those kind of opportunities for everybody to be able to listen to each other and, and learn. And again, that another reason why I think we're pretty, we're a decent school board because we, we are interested in learning still. So. Now, I didn't, I didn't mean to, it wasn't, I wasn't trying to give us a compliment. I don't know how that happened.
It sounded like, but that's cool.
I know, I wasn't meaning to do that. I appreciate the learning. Oh, but oh yeah, one more thing. I also wanted to give another recognition and thank you to administrators and staff for helping the students who have shifted this spring from either online to in person or in person to online. I'm not sure how many went either way, but I do know that, that the, the in person, I know a lot of people who have done online to in person and it's gone pretty smoothly. I mean, you know, there's, they, I, I think there's been a huge learning curve for those kiddos who are online and everyone's been real patient and really good about incorporating those kids back in and helping them along the way. And that's a big job.
Yeah, I think any, anytime you have transitions, they're challenging and, you know, we spend a lot of time at the, in August for the students that were in person, really training them on the, the layers of protection and, and the protocols and making sure that they were followed with fidelity and, and just kind of going through that process again. Was important for everyone, but especially important for the students that were coming back in. And then, you know, obviously shifting around some of the, the structures in the remote environment also required additional, you know, thought and consideration to, you know, the students in their transitions, which is, can be challenging. Thank you.
Another issue that we've talked about some and related to COVID and remote, this is Cecile's comment, just made me think about students' mental health. And, and I, you know, perhaps this is an update to give next month. Just to, to check in with, you know, counselors to see what they're hearing and seeing and, you know, if we can get kind, some kind of a, a sense of how, how our students are doing. It's a challenging environment all the way around. So I don't want to forget about that, even though how, what percentage of our students are in, back in.
About eighty-two percent.
Eighty-two percent. So, but there's issues, you know, mental health, both, you know, remote and, and in person. So maybe if we could do a little bit of a, an update for next month on, you know, how they're doing.
Yes. Yeah, we can pull something together.
And Dr. Corman, I, I don't know what, how we could do this, but if we could touch base with the staff and the administrators as well.
Yeah.
That are handling this as well. If there's a way we can touch base with them as well.
Good point. Yep, for sure.
Excellent.
I've got a quick question. I'm seeing a lot of blank screens. I don't think I've touched anything and messed anything up and I'm not techy, but can you all see me?
Yes, we can see you, Amy. And we can hear you.
I can't see any, you had disappeared even Jeff, but you've come back on, but nobody else has.
Okay. You might have intermittent internet issues, but
But I never have before on Zoom.
Okay. Yeah.
There are lots of Zoom settings, like in the view menu, you might be able to mess with going back and forth a couple of times if you try to view speaker.
But I haven't touched anything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we can still see you and, and hear you. So hopefully.
Okay, well.
Okay. Any other comments, Jen or Dr. Corman?
I don't have any. Does anybody else have anything else? Either related to the staff updates or otherwise? Cause we haven't done any kind of committee updates in a while either. So, I mean, Fred gave his, but maybe perhaps next month we'll take some time to do individual committee updates.
Okay. That sounds good.
Okay.
All right, then I will move into the action agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, I will pull up the agenda on my screen. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay. So the first item is action item nine point oh one, approval of the resolution for purchase of electric service.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
So this is the process that we involve in, get involved in annually with Meta, which is an electric consortium to try and get the best hedge for our electric pricing. So they have done, we've been a part of this specific consortium since I've been here and we've done very well in saving the district money.
That's great. Any questions or comments? No? Okay. Brittany, take the role, please.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Ms. Deeds?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
Dr. Corman?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item nine point oh two is the approval of Power School Special Programs contract.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And I'm going to explain this one a little bit. So this one reads that you authorize a superintendent to enter into a contract with Power School Special Programs for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. That is, has just recently changed. So that might be for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. We may stay with our current provider, but it's not the actual contract that you are approving. You were just authorizing me to enter into negotiations with Power School. So I left it on there just so everybody's aware that at some point we will be transitioning our student services software to Power School's Special Programs Module.
And transferring, transferring from?
So Progress, Progress Book is our current Student Services Software. And we are transitioning, just like we transitioned to EFP or E-Finance Plus. Brittany's conversion and Unified Talent in HR and Special Programs. And then that will lead to our Student Information System conversion.
So the end user, families, sorry, Thomas, go ahead.
No, Progress Book does have some family parent facing views of grades and so on and so forth for some of the students that might change or all the students that will eventually change or?
Yeah. So there's a parent facing process for Power School as well. So everything has a parent face, a student face, a parent face, a staff face. As we transition.
And there's great efficiencies to synchronize systems. I know we're doing a lot of great work with Power School and things like that. I'm sure there's going to be some good efficiencies there. You know, but you know, work that appropriately with the timing that it takes to implement the software conversion. Brittany, as you know, it's a, takes some effort and things like that. So just think through that process well. And certainly you have our approval to, to move that direction if it seems like it's going to give us the efficiency.
Excellent. Thank you.
Jen, sorry, I should probably know this, but I don't. Thomas mentioned, so we have, Power School is used for other things already?
Well, so Power School is used for our Unified Talent and for E-Finance Plus.
Okay. Oh, okay. I didn't realize that it was interface. Okay. Thanks. Any other questions or comments? No? Okay, take the role, please.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
Ms. Deeds?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw? Ms. Shaw?
Yeah.
Hi.
Dr. Corman?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is the approval of the Granville High School Course Description Book.
Can you scroll up, please?
I can. Thank you for reminding me.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right. So we have our course description book that we will start the scheduling process to communicate to our students what they have as far as options for learning. Most of the changes are minor tweaks. We have a couple of courses that we're moving from year-long courses to semester courses in order to give students more options for taking different electives. And then the inclusion of the Portrait of a Graduate and other kind of introductory type information into the course description book.
At the high school level, all the various CTE pathway courses that are offered in collaboration with CTEC going to remain largely the same in staffing and court offerings?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, take the role, please.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
Ms. Deeds?
Aye.
Dr. Corman?
Aye.
Okay, the next item, which is part of the addendum is nine point oh four, approval of agreement with LACCA for the Field Technician Services.
So moved.
Second.
Two.
So this action item is for us to partner with LACCA and they, to provide technician services. Obviously Glenn's department, when we went into the COVID environment, was significantly more devices that they have to manage on a day-to-day basis. And there are obviously issues with break fix and other things that take a lot of time and manpower. And so we're going to partner with the Lincoln County Area Computer Association, which we already contract with for ITC services to get a field technician to help us with some of that break fix. I probably didn't do a great job describing it. Glenn probably could do a better job, but I, that's the general consensus.
Is this essentially an alternative to an internal hire and it's effectively full-time for the remainder of this year? Or do you expect that it will be replacing an internal candidate at some point or what's the?
So, so right now it is, would be an external hire. So we would be partnering with them for those, those services. They would not be our employee. And right, honestly, right now we're just trying to find a person that can fill that position. Or LACCA is going through the process of trying to find a person. So it's still to be determined as to who the person is. But they want, we wanted to have the agreement in place so that they can move forward with confidence that that person could be employed for the rest of the year. And I could easily see them going through the remainder of this year in through the summer months for sure. And then we can look at that again, moving into next school year.
I think it's great to connect with LACCA in that way. You know, they might have ties in and ways to do some recruiting and things like that to help us bring in somebody that's got the relevant skills for working with us. So thanks for looking into that as a model and.
No problem.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, take the role, please.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Ms. Deeds?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
Dr. Corman?
Aye.
Okay, the next item is ten point oh one, A through C six.
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, Fred.
All right. So I will take us through these a little bit. So we obviously have several donations that we'd like to thank those individuals who are contributing money or items to the schools for our benefit. We appreciate that. We have a, a whole supplemental contracts for the twenty twenty-one, twenty, twenty twenty-one school year, including the spring sports. And then we have one that is referenced for next year, the head boys soccer coach. We are naming Sam Thompson as the new head boys soccer coach. And then most of these are related to the spring sports season. Good news is we have a couple of new substitutes coming into the organization. Couple of leaves of absences, a couple of resignations, but we also have a couple of new bus drivers, which will be very helpful. And much appreciated. So we're continuing to recruit. If you have your CDL license and would like to drive a yellow school bus for Granville Schools, please contact Kim Clary in Granville Schools. And that is the consent agenda.
Any questions or comments about the items on the consent agenda? All right, take the role, please.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Ms. Deeds?
Aye.
Dr. Corman?
Aye.
That takes us to the financial section of the agenda.
Okay, item eleven point zero one, approval of the January twenty twenty-one financial report.
So moved.
Second.
Any additional questions or comments on the financial report?
I think it's great to put the review of it upfront and things like that. It's a good thing to have the beginning of the agendas. That works well and it looked great.
Thank you.
You can take the role.
With a format of the next month, in the next few months, financial reports speak quite similar and in your leave of absence?
Yes. So Todd Griffith will be filling in as interim treasurer. And he will, will have access to all the same reports and be able to keep a similar format for consistency sake. I was really hoping to have the athletic complex, like a final report done prior to my leave. But I think since we've been talking about that every month for, gosh, over a year now. I think that would be, that should be okay too, even in my absence. But yeah, it should be a pretty similar format.
Great.
And anything else? No? Okay, take the role, please.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
Ms. Deeds?
Aye.
Dr. Corman?
Aye.
Hey, item eleven point zero two, approval of the Permanent Appropriation Resolution for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
And the appropriations we are revising this month are the S R two fund, the Fund for S R two, to allow for that additional three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we'll be receiving in that fund. We also received some final adjustments to our regular federal allocations. So very small, less than a thousand dollar changes to some of those funds. And then a final allocation for our Auxiliary Services Fund, which is funding that comes from the state that runs through our books for Granville Christians. So they receive their final allocation for this year as well. So we are making those changes to the appropriations.
And just sort of as a matter of process for us and everybody to understand, even though we call it a permanent appropriation, we do have to change it every time we get new money into a fund.
Yep. So we appropriate at the fund level. So any increase in cash, so in this case, we'll be receiving additional cash in these federal grants, we still have to increase the appropriation or the budget for those at the fund level. So sometimes we build in a buffer. So sometimes we know there's going to be certain changes with grants and things like that. But obviously when you get an additional three hundred and fifty thousand, that kind of blows that buffer out of the water. So yeah, any, any, typically any increase to an overall fund would require revision throughout the year.
And there's just been so many, like, again, this is like the, nothing is written in pen this year kind of philosophy going. Yeah. So
Exactly.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm not saying that there's a problem with anything. I just, you know, just wanted sort of the process to be articulated. That's all.
Sure. Yep.
Any other questions or comments? All right, take the role, please.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
Ms. Deeds? Ms. Deeds.
Hi.
Ms. Shaw.
Hi.
Dr. Corman.
Hi.
Okay, item eleven point zero three, approval of the resolution to establish the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Two Fund and the Mike Carrion Memorial Fund.
So moved.
Second.
Jeff, can you roll scroll up then? Thank you. Sorry, Brittany, go ahead.
That's okay. So again, the S R two fund, we are formally approving that so that we can set up that fund. And the Mike Carrion Memorial Fund was previously under the consent agenda as a donation, but this will be a scholarship fund that will be awarded annually to a high school senior, hopefully, for five hundred dollars for an individual who has had an impact on the athletic department or specific athletic team without actually being an athlete. So I would recommend that we approve both of those funds.
Thanks to those sponsors for that scholarship fund. That's a great contribution to our students. Now, that's, those funds are going to basically rest in one account, one subaccount, and be used for the scholarship going forward annually.
Correct, yes. And what we try to do with those scholarship funds is put that, put that money into a CD so that we can extend the life of those funds and get a couple extra years out of them if we can through interest earnings. So we will do that with this as well.
Great idea. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, take the role, please.
Mr. Miller.
Hi.
Ms. Shaw.
Hi.
Mr. Wolf.
Hi.
Deeds.
Hi.
Dr. Corman.
Hi.
Yeah, item eleven point zero four, approval of the resolution to extend the repayment period to April of twenty twenty-two for the school store advance, which was originally approved in April of twenty nineteen.
So moved.
Wait a second.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, can you scroll up, please? Thank you.
Sorry, I'm looking at it on my paper, so.
You can hold it up higher.
Yeah.
This advance was originally approved for one year, a repayment period of one year in April of twenty nineteen. And then COVID happened, and so it didn't end up, the school store didn't end up opening last year, so we extended it for one year. And then we've had some staffing change, and so we are requesting that we extend that again for another year in hopes that we can get the school store up and running for next year.
Sounds good.
We extend it for like two or three years, because I think we've done this several times already, and if you just get it out of the way.
I mean, we can, but it's really been extended for specific, very specific reasons with COVID and and the the change in staffing. So it kind of defeats the purpose of an advance, which is supposed to be repaid within a certain period of time. So I don't, I don't think that that's necessary, and certainly, if it doesn't happen.
I'm looking.
Next year.
Hopefully, that'll make it happen next year.
But, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? No? All right, take the role, please.
Mr. Miller.
Hi.
Mr. Wolf. Ms. Deeds.
Hi.
Ms. Shaw.
Hi.
Dr. Corman.
Hi.
At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to move into executive session to consider the employment of a public employee or official.
So moved.
A second.
Fight it out. Go.
Look, Mr. Miller.
Hi.
Mr. Wolf.
Hi.
Ms. Deeds.
Hi.
Ms. Shaw.
Hi.
Dr. Corman.
Hi. Thank you. There will be no action taken after the executive session. So this ends our, this part of our meeting.
Are we just staying in this?
No, so there is a separate Zoom link that was shared with you for the executive session.
Okay.
And we will stop recording and stop our live YouTube, so.
Okay, we'll see y'all soon. The other link, right?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, good night, yeah. Um, oh, I was gonna, I was gonna see if anybody needed five minutes.